Page sixteen says here cash flow statements. It's required for silver, but it basically just shows you how much you paid in cash. What are the numbers in here, some expense. If you don't have specific questions, I'll be free. If there's really a lot of that is just running, your cash goes up there. Doesn't have a whole lot of deep meaning or anything like that. Apparently not. Page eighteen and nineteen, these are fiduciary plans. These are not included anywhere else because this aren't really your money. This is the police and fire. Technically, you put the money in, but it is set aside in a trust to pay the actual police and fire pension. So, the way it's treated in the government is that you show that it's five point, almost six million held in trust for pension benefits. And if you look on page nineteen, I'll show you what came in. Right now, we're just having interest and dividends in there. And then you can see we paid, basically we paid three hundred thirty seven thousand and one point two point. And that's the further pension that eventually will go away. Page twenty. Oh, pages twenty. Pages twenty through twenty-four, I'm not going to go into detail. This is just a description of the city, what's included in it. It describes how the city accounts for things. They're just standard notes that say, "The basic accounting is this. We follow these governmental accounting principles." So, I don't think you want me to do that to you. So, we will skip page through, page twenty-five. And in the notes, I usually just skim through the first, the amount ones that I think will be at least interesting in some way. But if you have the detail or you had a question, I should read through, please, just pass them through. Page twenty-five, this note thirteen, fund reserves. This is what I was talking about, what'd be assigned from balance. It explains that border commissioners is the highest decision-making level here. Required, I'll say that. And that if you were going to commit fund balance, which is a legal, which is a legal term, an accounting term, you'd have to vote to do that. No one else could do that, vote a commission. It also explains that currently we don't have a policy, but, and it tells you what is assigned. Page twenty-six through twenty-nine, as once again, so I'm going to skim through. These are details, basically in the notes, a lot of it is just detail of what's in the balance sheet. So, if you want to know what's making up the investments, if you want to know what's in receivables, this is going to tell you. And also on page twenty-eight and twenty-nine does a huge detail that's required of capital asset activity. There actually wasn't a whole lot of activity this year. A lot of purchases, I think, have been put on hold, so not a lot to look at.
I think I saw a note earlier that we purchased, what, six hundred thousand, approximately, six hundred thousand dollars worth of fixed assets from the general fund. Purchased either out of the general fund and over the other, the other funds, right?
Right.
Step one out.
Okay. If anyone has questions, please let me know. Page thirty, since we had talked about it, is note F that shows you where money was transferred. We discussed.
Does that mean I won't want to transfer? Does that reflect the radios or is that something different? I can't remember.
Well, radios were purchased out of E-911, but we had wanted the government to do that after the transfer. So...
That was part of the infrastructure.
Yeah. But did we, did we actually purchase?
Well, radios were purchased out of drug funds.
Okay. I was thinking we purchased a hundred thousand out of barrels of cap.
Well, you did for infrastructure.
Oh, I got you, I got you. Yeah, yeah, this gets capital, swaps.
Yeah, okay. It's not the actual radio, it's...
Yeah, yeah.
But it still went towards that business.
That's correct, that's correct.
Okay, better speed this along. Thirty-one through thirty-three, once again, more detail on debt. I'm sure you're familiar with what you owe, so you probably don't need me to read that to you, but it does have an updated disclosure, information on all the debt activity during the year, and then information on principal payments due, implied year increments until we pay off.
So, we're over three point seven million on the budget. Hand-related supplements.
If I could, on page thirty-two, if this might be of interest, when you look on the governmental activities, you'll see TCF, a corporate finance, and it shows an interest rate of three point three two percent. So, we'll, I would assume that the interest rate for the, that's on page thirty-two, so we'll find out whether or not on that five-year lease, the interest rate is...
Right.
...at that number, maybe even lower.
Yeah. I'd say one point three.
See, if you look at, hopefully we'll get lower. Let's get to the second. Page, let's skip over the four pages to thirty-four. This is a lot of my file about your risk management, and most of this is because the city is self-insured for workers' comp and health insurance, so we have to disclose all the details about that, and how those are set up, and what the stop-loss coverage is, if you haven't, if I'm sure you've been following this. Questions? Just kind of a little bit. Thirty-four.
Okay, I guess I do have a question. I was going to ask you about J.
Okay.
Because I, I was going to ask you about...
What's for an object?
Oh, um, I was just, I, I finally knew the answer to this, and I just kind of forgot my, is the city manager? Are you just saying the last name? I didn't think you were. That's not a big deal, honestly.
Are you participating in the ICNA?
I'm sorry. I didn't think, I didn't think you were...
I'm going to carry over.
That's what I was going to say.
Well, yeah, that's, we know, we had it, last year, we finished up the end of the year, doing the payout on that, on the previous.
It was previous.
Yeah, the previous management, so that's what, that's what...
This happens, this audit person, I mean...
Yeah, that's what that's about.
I was going to say, just to make that, just so that there was no confusion. That was a question I had when I looked at it the other day, when I sent it to you.
Sure, you should change that.
And I'm sorry, but I didn't listen to you. I didn't talk, before we got, I was like, oh, yeah.
Would you love to make that benefit?
Well, I guess my point was, I don't think you have, I don't know for your long-term best interest if that was, unless you're going to go and try to be the city manager someplace else, probably not with that. That would be a good question I had.
That's a great thing to know. I did not realize that. The other parts of note J are basically talking about police and fire, and you have to have an actuarial evaluation, of course, and it's not there that shows they're funded, so that's with everyone else. On page thirty-six, the most recent actuarial report was January nine, two thousand and ten. Those are required every three years, and I'll show you the current, of course, but we have an unfunded long-term liability. It also will describe in this note county employee retirement system, which all the employees now take part in. Those rates are disclosed, they go up every year, in my experience, pretty much lately. It does not give you detail of, you know, what your ultimate liability would be, because it's a pay as you go to this state plan. So, you're paying a percentage per person, but it's not going to show you right now. CERS doesn't break it down so that you know which part is your part of the liability at the whole. There are discussions about making the required disclosure so that they would, you would have to know how much is your portion and show that as a liability. Right now, that's just a discussion, it's game full.
So, it's out on, it's out on the state's books right now?
It's on the state's, it's on CERS, a separate audit report right now, but it's just pooled together, so you could not ever figure out what proportion is for each entity.
I like that issue's paying for the state by the very best committee.
Why do we worry against Santa?
Stop. It's going to be...
Page, it's thirty-seven. We need to... This is contingency, this is a standard note, it just says, "For the most part, the city is being sued, which is understated any time, and I don't currently believe any of the lawsuits will result in anything." But it also, we did also disclose the commitment related to the Clean Water Act, since that was such a large ongoing item. Questions? Want me to read some notes? All right, let me get to the required supplementary information. On page thirty-nine, this is actually something I'm sure you've seen. This is the budget to actual schedule. So, this shows by line, I don't know what the budget was, and then what our actual was, and what the variance was. I think, I'm sure you've seen this. And I think what you were asking about on the garbage correction, I'll show the budget here, obviously, under budget is on purpose on that. If you look on page forty, you actually see pools for revenues. It's about two hundred eighty-five thousand dollar positive, where revenues were not under budgeted in total. That's compared to the final budget. And then for expenditures, those were under budget by about seven point three, where costs were kept down, I think. So, the overall is basically net income of around a million dollars, just like, basically on the other statement. There are slight differences between this and the other statement, because the budget basis is a little different, but it's obviously not significant. If you look at all of those reconciling numbers at the bottom, it's about sixty thousand total.
And so, this is the question I keep getting, my primary... Return to these numbers, if I am reading them. We finished the year. A million dollars in the block.
Yes. I do want you to keep one thing in mind, because your budget basis does this way, it's reported this way, but that does include six hundred thousand dollars of money transferred from other funds, so that would be an expense somewhere else. I don't think that helps, but yes, that is true.
Then, let me ask a question. I want to get back to the same question I asked you earlier. Are any unreserved balance, undesignated balances, nine point one? All right, go back to page ten.
Yeah, it is right now.
Okay, yeah, it is right now. Last year, we, we had eight point five. So, when I reconcile that, it's like, it's up six hundred thousand, approximately.
Okay, sounds great.
So, is it because some of the other, the other money that we designated, like, in a liability account, increased, and that's why all that million dollars didn't go? You know, like, if I understand what Sells is trying to say, you know, are, we finished in the block a million, but did some of that money get reserved to another area? Because, because the reserve account, the undesignated reserve went from eight point five to nine point...
What were the differences?
Nine point one.
So, that's a change every year, depending on...
Yeah, right, but I'm saying that some of that money get reserved somewhere, you know, like, for example, our, our compensated balances went up, you know, half a million dollars from last year.
Right, because you have that as a sign.
Right.
To give, to give the things that you chose, or that are presented as assigned, or designated, or blown up, and yes, that...
Yeah, so I'm going to all go into the fund balance, is what I'm trying to say, the undesignated fund balance.
And we've seen those numbers very before, based on numbers, you know, it's a different account of principles, where, very layman's terms, where the amount of money that the city spends and has doesn't change, it's just the way we calculate the account of things.
Yes, and the budget basis is different, you'll do it differently than what's required for those nonparticular statements under generally accepted accounting principles. And there are several people who do it this way, but one of those items, and it makes sense that you wouldn't budget it, but the workers' comp and health insurance, right now, I don't think it's too confusing either, but those funds are included in the general fund, like what we're doing for workers' comp and health insurance. It's a, on most, I don't want to say most, most that I dealt with on other cities, that's separate. We wouldn't include that anyway in general, because normally, that's a separate fund, so that you can see the ins and outs that relate only to that self-insurance. Does that make sense? So, I think in this, of course, you're not budgeting those, because those are money that you're taking in and spending. I mean, you might be budgeting to pay the health claims, but you know what that, your separate trust that you set aside to cover all those claims do, you're not budgeting, of course, because you plan to use that for those items. But a lot of people separate all of that activity out, so that they can see each year what the workers' comp and health generate in revenue, and what they pay in claims. So, I think that sort of makes it a little more confusing for them.
May I ask you a question? Okay, cancel like, cell tower, the fee that we get for Fort Hill. Is, is that included in there? We've got that, it should be broken out.
Yeah, that's another.
Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Yeah, that's another.
When you're saying that, I don't think that...
Well, let's, let's put this way, it's another, it goes all in the other, the three hundred thousand is transferred over from E-9111 over to the general fund.
Yeah, let me flip another page, and we'll get to that one. These things are incredible, not, no, no, gosh, these things are different for a long time. If there's no questions on that budget part now, let's, if we go to page forty-three, and actually, I'm going to go directly to, I want to go directly to page forty-six, because I think that's going to be the most relevant. These are the other funds, most of them, on page forty-six. It is small. It is tiny, should have run nine. These are what's called other funds. These are not our general funds, they're not sewer, but these are, all of these little are called special revenue. Does this make sense? Page forty-six.
Forty-six.
That feed back to those front statements. So, this is where you should see, you'll see municipal aid, that obviously has a restricted purpose. Some of these funds don't exactly have their restricted purpose, we probably could absorb them in general, but they're so tiny, you know, what they're lost and found is a separate fund, you're not as far as not. But most of these have a specific purpose, like asset forfeiture that has to be used for specific items. So, this is where you get the detail of things that are not in your daily budgeting, what are money coming in and out of the city. That makes sense. And I think if you look on page forty-five, that's where the Ford Hill is.
Where?
There's not many combined, I know, but... It's Ford Hill, it's a separate one.
I'm sorry. My question actually was, just to make sure that that wasn't being counted in to that, like on page ten, the nine point one million dollars.
No. Ford Hill comes over on this other governmental column, and it's included in the restricted.
Okay, so then, that would mean, like, if I count page ten, that, that would be included in the nine point one ninety-three.
It's in total governmental, right, but it's not in the general.
That's why, I just wanted to be sure I was separate, just going to be clear.
That is correct.
Not that that's, just...
Sure.
You're trying to ask that question because you said something about combining, or somebody said something about combining something in there.
I just said it's government-wide, it's just smushed together, but on this, it's not quite full, it's a lot clearer. It's a lot clearer.
Is that, this line you assigned, almost forty-eight thousand dollars, is that, is that a cell tower? What is that? Do you know what I'm saying?
What's that?
Under Ford Hill?
No, that's not, that's, that might be, they get a lot of grant money through the Ford Hill account, but mainly, that cell tower stuff is in the third column, E-9111, if you look at four fifty-three, oh oh two.
So, I'm not so confused, that's not related to Ford Hill? I thought we said something about Ford Hill.
Yeah, he had, well, Ford Hill's got a cell tower on it, and that money's coming into E-9111 account. That's a little bit confusing, that's.
Yeah.
The Ford, the money's, my money going to Ford Hill...
I don't know if that's line is...
Yeah, and I, I wonder about that, Steve, because Ford Hill, you know, that we, that property was given to the city, so...
Yeah.
I wish Jim were here, because he could tell for the not, the, in revenue from the cell tower on Ford Hill has to go...
Has to go in the risk.
That's the way that come to, of the agreement that the family was. That's all, I want to be sure that that was...
I just, I just assumed all the cell tower stuff was going through that E-9111 account. I may, I may be, I may have misspoken on that, Dan, I'm not sure. Okay, I'll verify it with, with Jim tomorrow.
The cell tower is, is to generate revenue for Fort Hill improvements.
Restrictive to the...
Very strict.
I'm sorry, where's Ford Hill on that page?
Page forty-five, it's not a special revenue.
Oh, okay.
It's on the other...
I'll see.
They mean by...
No, no. Are there other questions you have or...
Yeah, it's just real income, so I bet, I bet that's what it is.
I enjoy the questions, I did one of these for an hour, less than, no one even spoke, so...
Yeah, I bet that's right.
All right. What other questions do you have? If we don't care, I'll keep going. Page forty-eight is really next thing that I wanted to point out. Forty-eight, E-91551, are two reports that are required under government auditing standards. Basically, what this is, what I tell people, is that this tells you what we did as far as the government standards go, we looked at internal control, and, but we're not giving an opinion on it. But we also looked at, more importantly, compliance with grants. Does anyone have questions? So, what we would have to report here is if we had any compliance findings over those federal programs, and we did not, I like to point that out, because that's obviously very important. A big piece of this is the federal part.
I did have more questions. And I didn't have to strike more the internal control, I was just going to, maybe talking about the policies on the, you know...
On the front that I see.
Instead of policies, I was looking at, are you going to, what do you mean, things in reserve? Without the, more the internal control? Sad, because to me, it almost could be.
Probably could be. I mean, it would be, I don't know how that works for you, I mean, it would be some kind of policy, which I assume you have to agree with, but I'm clearly a person.
And that's, that's, that's what I was going to say, and I can admit it, but that gives an awful lot of authority, which I may not be, may not be a bad idea, I just don't know, but it's, it's like, who's going to check? I don't know, if you think about it, who's going to check that individual?
Sure. Well, I mean, and you could designate one person, you could say that everything has to come through, or it has to be reviewed by you, I mean, there's probably a lot of options. I could actually probably send you some examples of what other people are doing to control that, make sure that they're happy with. And, and, I mean, there are, on small boards, you know, there can be the option to only have the commission decide that, or everything have to go through them, but, you know, a lot of people don't want that retained necessarily for something small, that's a project that you want to reserve money for.
And I did, not sorry, I don't want to make it worse, I just figured out that, from more of the internal control policy.
I mean, you would want to make sure, yes, that you had some, you were comfortable with you, you had designated funds, or how it was being done. I mean, you can't set standards for how it's done, that it can only be done for certain items, I mean, it's, you know, pretty wide range, John.
Well, that's what, because if we didn't, it's almost like a free range to where it could get, I don't want to say it could use.
I understand what you mean. And I think there's something wrong with that, with setting, you know, bad lines, like, okay, this is a great function for someone to do, but we want it only if it's for, you know, these certain liabilities, or something that we got, we know, we have a set, I don't know, quote, work plan next few years, and women, we know we need to set us all this for me. That's true. Page fifty-two, which are scheduled expenditures of federal awards. This is a lot of what the linko in this document relates to as far as these other reports. These are, you are required to report all expenditures made from federal grants for the city. You're required to report in all this detail. Our requirement is that we audit under what's called the Single Audit Act, which is a federal requirement, where we come in, we determine, based on the forms the federal government sets, which programs are made, what's called, they call major, and then we do specific additional compliance testing on those where yes. You'll see on page fifty-three, your total federal expenditure for the year, two point three million. I think federal expenditures are a good thing to look at, but obviously, does have to be spent for that federal purpose of the greater restriction. And page fifty-four shows you, sorry, page fifty-five, near the bottom, it says identification of major programs. Those two grants identified are the ones that we did, what's called our major program testing on, and we did a lot of detailed compliance testing. All right, questions? The last page is prior to your finding, behavior and finding, and we're required to include it with the status that hadn't been corrected, and, and actually, what ended up happening is, there weren't any corrections required post-state, I think it was, to the actual four days. All right, all right.
That's good work.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to give you my business card, if you ever...
That would be great.
Yeah, just told me. See if I know anything. Seeing one has me, and I don't know what the process is, and now I'm, I'm here for the January, is that kind of the... Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a couple of garbage billing issues, just want to mostly, we're unfolding this, and we want to make sure we're doing it right. The billing, Tom, you might move forward, I don't know, there's a big question. As has been said earlier, the billing for the last six months of this year was pending, with the deal, I mean, my question, that the commission is in favor of billing the last six months of this year, is still on the books, is still out there. And then, we've got the question that one additional month, the month of January, will pass before we implement our new pay control. So, the question comes, is it okay with the commission for us to bill for seven months to prevent having to bill for six months and one month? You see what the question is?
What did you mean, the six month and one month?
I'm sorry.
What's the six month and one month?
Well, it's, it's all in the books that will be billed for July through December, for the present year that's passed.
And be it right now.
That would be right now. And then, because we're going to implement our new program, February first, there's one month in there, do you, what's your, what's your will for that one month? You see what I mean?
I see what you're saying.
If you want to bill for that month, then, then it would make good financial sense for us to bill for seven months total.
So, from July to January?
Yes, yes, through January. And because it, it's estimated that it costs us seventy-five hundred dollars per bill, right? Per billing cycle?
Well, I think what you're saying is that, when you get around to July again, if you send out that bill for just January, you have to send that to everybody, versus, if you're sending out the bill in next July, just for the, for the twelve dollar, then you just send those out, you don't have to send out as many.
Do you understand my question?
I understand what you're saying. It sounds like what you said, I'm going to say, what? Three point...
Seventy-five hundred dollars...
At least, it takes about thirty percent of seventy-five hundred dollars, right?
Yeah.
So, it's about thirty...
Oh, I said yeah, yeah.
Thirty probably, thirty percent took that.
Twenty, two hundred.
Just say there's a couple thousand dollars, you know? We're not sending bills to everybody on the new system. You know, bill, bill roughly go from seventy-five to like five, or something like that.
How you feel about that? If you're comfortable, giving a look from two months, say, say that for seven months? I'll just say, I don't, I will say that I would support that.
I mean, there's another side of this, there's another side of this point, which is that if we're all just sending out a thirty-dollar bill, instead of a thirty-five-dollar bill, then we could avoid sending out a bill altogether to the folks who are due a refund. But if we're sending out a thirty-five-dollar bill, then under this scenario... but if we're sending out a thirty-five dollar bill, then under this scenario, we're gonna have to send lots of people a five dollar bill, here at this one.
How many people will put their credit?
Uh, you know, it's kind of, it's in flux right now, because there's a lot of people coming in, asking for money back right now, so it's, it's in flux, and one time, there was, there was about thirty, thirty-five hundred people that prepaid, but, you know, that's, it's hard to put a finger on it now, because the people are still asking for refunds.
We don't have an idea how many people so far, or does?
I, I could, I could give you the number, I don't, I don't know it right tonight, but I could try to get to it, it's, but, like I say, every day I got folks coming, you know, coming in, so it's kind of, it's constantly changing, but we can get to some kind of number.
Thank you, you've been well into account, that would help us make a decision. But, I think the difference is so negligible, I don't, I mean, I don't really see the value in, in avoiding sending people a five dollar bill later by sending them a five dollar bill now.
We got, we got a couple things, we got folks that haven't paid for two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Sure.
So we got that, bill, bill forward, then we got, you know, the current ordinance at state's, you know, we're gonna send a bill out, we, we did, well, we, administratively, we sent the bill out in January last year, so, I say, you know, administratively, we'd do the same thing, if we, if we kept the same practice, we'd send a thirty dollar bill, and as Fred said, it makes sense to go ahead, and we're gonna, if we got one month, you know, that's, uh, before we start the new system, go on and bill for that one single month, just go ahead and send that bill out, at the same time, just send a thirty dollar bill. We've got several things going on, actually. I just like, it, it, it's good, well, I'll talk about from the, from the candidate's point, I like to clean up the old system before you get started, getting to the new this, you know.
I just, I'm just really right, is to send, to send people an even higher bill than they're expecting, I mean, lots of folks think that we're, that the pay group is gonna lower the bill, you know, that's not true, they're just gonna lower like ninety-seven percent of the bill, we've been taking a lot of heat for raising the bill, and granted, a lot of folks are giving heat for raising the bill, because they think that the bill's at zero, they say, but all the same, I mean, just given all the, all the misconceptions and all the, the public confusion about all of this, it's just, I don't think, I don't think I could support sending people an even higher, I don't think I could support sending people a higher bill.